So.
Call the meeting in order.
As required by the Public Neighbors Act in nineteen seventy five, an emergency meeting was provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty four by publication notice like the best candidate, Hanover County Democrat and by police vehicle said no to enough for building on the stated date. Mayor Barkson.
Here.
Mr. Bailey, please excuse. Mr. Bean.
Here.
Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Winner.
President.
And Mr. Penelope.
Here. Please say it perfectly. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The. Sorry, can you call everybody to seven o'clock, please? Or thank you, stuff, I guess.
Uh, I thought they were coming at six, but.
I, I wonder if they still think until you seven, maybe.
You know what? Bob was not coming, so I bet you Barry doesn't know.
No, okay.
You're probably right.
Okay. Um. Okay, a bunch of discussions. So. We've moved back to three, you answer, right?
So, since our last meeting, um, there were a couple of small changes that were made. Um, I know there was a, a bit of discussion last meeting, but, um, without having any, um, action that was actually taken by the governing body, I didn't make some of those changes. So I'll go through what was discussed last time, what actually changed from last time. This way we're all on the same page for today. So I know one of the questions that had come up was the reason why the audit fee was up at forty one thousand, it was thirty seven thousand last year. So I went back into my engagement letter for the audit and that amount was thirty eight thousand, um, three eighty, I think it was. And that's a two percent increase from the previous year, so I lowered that amount to be the same amount that you're actually going to pay. Um, I also made the adjustment for the portion of the police salaries and wages that are going to be charged directly to the Safe and Secure Community Grant. Um, so that's taken into account. And also we moved thirty thousand, six hundred and forty five dollars, which was the local portion for getting road project that's going to be grant funded. Um, so we moved that out into capital from inside of appropriations. Um, other than that, we talked about, I know that Bill had brought up that there was a potential of getting forty one hundred dollars back from the border bag for, uh, the tax collection. Okay, um, I hadn't made that change yet. Still have the ten thousand that it was, um, because we didn't take any action on that. Um, we had brought up about possibly putting in SRO salary into the police for twenty two thousand. Um, I haven't included that yet. Uh, we are still including the twenty nine thousand, seven hundred for the lawn cutting fees. That was something that, um, Shannon, when we had talked about the budget, wasn't a hundred percent sure whether or not that would be included this year or not, but it's still included as of right now. Um, and we don't have any other capital items in the budget currently, other than that thirty thousand, six forty five, which is going to be our local portion for that road project. Um, as it stands right now, we're underneath the levy cap by twenty three thousand, one hundred seventy nine dollars. We're underneath the appropriation cap by fifty nine thousand, eight hundred and nine dollars. Um, currently, if you want to discuss where, what that means to the average taxpayer, um, it's a four point three cent increase or about a six percent increase over the prior year. And for the average home assessed at two hundred seventy two thousand dollars, that's about a hundred and seventeen dollars annually, or about nine dollars, seventy two cents a month. And I know that the mayor had asked about what it is for a hundred thousand, so for a hundred thousand, it's forty three dollars. So forty three dollars for a hundred thousand dollar house, two hundred thousand is going to be eighty six dollars, three hundred thousand is a hundred twenty nine, and four hundred thousand is a hundred and seventy one. Yeah, right now we're in compliance with both the caps. Um. And I guess we have to. Have some discussion and make some decisions once and some.
Andrew, um, on that school issue, I think it was like forty one hundred or change.
Yeah, that's the number that I had to last night.
Yeah, we're gonna probably reduce it down to twenty two thirteen. We're gonna have a discussion about that, um, later on. Man, how much did you budget for the SRO officer?
I haven't included the SRO officer as of right now.
You have.
I have not.
Okay. Um. Steve. Somewhere I read, I don't know, have my note right in front of me. I thought there was about eighteen or nineteen thousand you figured for the SRO from September through the end of the year.
So.
Uh, yeah.
I know what I don't like what I gave last.
No, it was under twenty, but I don't know if he, he might not have included this.
I think we had, uh, Shannon was here, I don't think we had the, uh, payroll taxes included in what that numbers.
No, you just.
Yeah.
So I thought we estimated around twenty two.
Yeah, we did.
Okay, all right, so that's really not gonna change. So that is not included in your.
Right.
Okay.
Let's know the impact of putting that twenty two thousand in.
Yeah, we're gonna. Whether now or later, we're gonna find out.
So if we put that in, we are one thousand, one hundred and seventy nine dollars below the tax levy cap. And we are thirty seven thousand, three hundred forty four dollars below the appropriation cap, uh, which is a four point seven cent increase or six point five three percent over last year. Uh, average home, that's a hundred twenty seven dollars annually. And it's forty seven dollars approximately for a hundred thousand.
Rich, when you submit your budget, you don't even have the numbers in here for a police vehicle yet, correct?
Correct.
You have the estimates with you?
Yeah, they're in here. They're in our pocket. Uh, yes.
Okay.
You want me to break it down?
Looks like you're right under your, uh, free page.
So, uh, I guess while you're reading, just to explain, with last year's budget, we uh, we had budgeted in capital for the purchase of a vehicle, actually purchased two vehicles. We ended up, um, having the one vehicle that was totaled out. Insurance didn't pay for a total replacement of the vehicle nor all the equipment. So some of that money that was budgeted for a new car actually replaced one of our total. Uh, we did have enough money to buy a new car, however, and that is something we did purchase, however, we don't have the money to completely update that car. So there's a new car in the lot, but not updated.
Thirty, thirty eight thousand, fifty one dollars has to be included in the budget this year, otherwise you have a car you can't use.
Correct. Um. Do you have a budget? Do you have any, uh, figure of what's left in that?
No, but I, I can go get it.
Capital, uh.
Well, I don't see any way how we can't budget for that. There's no sense in having a car sitting in the lot you can't use. And our plan always was buy one vehicle a year, just so we don't have to, fuck having to buy two or three in one year.
Thanks, Matt.
Our last, uh, one of our SUVs that we bought back in two thousand seventeen, um, I, I told the mayor we still let the rest of the committee know. Uh, it has, uh, quite a bit of miles on it. Uh.
Hundred and hundred thousand. One twenty one.
Hundred twenty one thousand, that's miles on the car, that's not engine hours on your car. You can multiply that by at least four from idle time. Uh, so that car recently just went into the shop, had a water pump uh, problem, that car's had, uh, you know, issue after issue, just with the amount of hours on it. Uh, I spoke to the mayor, moving ahead with replacing the water pump on that, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the engine's gonna be fine. You won't know if the engine's fine, so you replace the water pump, so. Uh, it is, uh, an essential car, though, we're gonna need if we do have the SRO, cause we don't have the cars to have a new car up there. The amount of, uh, cars put up there, uh, and then if there's, uh, road jobs or whatnot, we usually keep those old vehicles around. Uh. For that.
So Andrew, we put the thirty eight thousand in. Are we to the point then we have to start cutting the budget to be under cap?
Yes, ma'am.
They'll make it easy for us.
Try as hard as they can to not make it easy.
Shannon brings back, could you still have just? You got, you got twenty three thousand there too, right? Under cap?
Under the, well, so I just added back in the SRO.
Right.
That put us eleven hundred dollars under cap.
Eleven hundred under cap.
So if I, do you want me to put in the thirty eight thousand, let you know the exact amount that would have to be cut?
Yeah.
Yeah, might as well.
And it's thirty eight thousand even that we're doing?
Thirty eight thousand and fifty one dollars.
The fifty one. We don't wanna sell ourselves short, right? Okay, um. No, we're fifteen hundred dollars, I'm sorry, I, the eleven hundred dollars, the, the, the twenty three thousand was the appropriation cap, I had them reversed in my mind.
Oh, okay.
We're, we're fifteen hundred dollars over the levy cap right now. So the fifty nine thousand that's on your sheet was the levy, I had them reversed, I'm sorry about that. Um, so we're fifteen hundred dollars over the levy cap right now, and we're still the eleven hundred dollars under the appropriation cap.
What were we gonna cut? Fifteen hundred?
Fifteen hundred right now.
So. If I said, let's put eighty three thousand, four hundred ninety one dollars in for another police vehicle, are you telling me we'd have to cut eighty six thousand dollars from the budget to buy a police car?
Rich, wow, twenty one thousand.
Is that what you're telling me? I see you nodding, is that it?
Yes, yes, yes. I'm not good with bad news.
I just don't understand how the, how they expect us to operate, uh, you know, they want you to have a responsible budget. And they're forcing us to do irresponsible things.
Yeah, if you did eighty three thousand, four ninety one, that would put you eighty six thousand, seven hundred sixty seven dollars over the tax levy cap.
And here's the real irony. I don't know where we can cut fifteen hundred dollars in the budget, fifteen hundred, not eighty six thousand, uh, without. I, I don't know, like, let, let's just shut the electricity off maybe or something, I, I don't even know what to tell.
The. The only other thing that we do have going for us right now is the interest, um, line. Again, it's, I, I caution you with the interest line, because that's essentially how we were regenerating our fund balance. If we were to, we could, right now we're budgeting a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in interest in the current year. Last year we had earned four hundred and twenty seven thousand dollars. The, the crux of this is, is that the reason that we had that much in interest was because of the money that we took out for the municipal building that's sitting and gaining interest for us right now. So we're gonna be spending that. Um, I don't know what the most recent number is for the interest.
We just rolled it over, I'm not exactly sure what she gave us.
I wanna say that last time you had said it was already at like seventy thousand or something.
Yeah. I think it's five something percent, yeah.
We can increase the budget amount for that interest slightly, I wouldn't go wild on it. Um, cause you don't wanna expose yourself if that's how we're generating fund balance currently.
But, but, I, I guess my, like, I'm just talking to police department, that's who I take care of. Paul takes care of the road department, we're not even talking about buying them a piece of equipment, and it's not gonna get any better by next year, by not buying a police car or buying equipment. Right. It's gonna, gonna be worse next year, saying we need two trucks and two police cars. How are we gonna get under cap? You know what I'm saying, you know, you know what I'm saying. How would we, how are we gonna address this problem next year? I, I don't know how we could buy one police car even next year if we had to live by these numbers.
Well, here's where we begin. They figured in three percent increase, salary increase, lower that to zero. And we'll start from there, see how much we can afford to pay our employees.
Eight thousand dollars.
Hey. Two thousand, near fifteen thousand there, two thousand.
I'm just saying, I, I, but I don't know how you're gonna get to eighty six thousand, and that's just for one department, yeah, but how, and if he wants a, take a truck or a tractor or something.
Well, we're only talking half a truck. And a box.
We'll start there and work our way up.
When getting, uh, the number from, uh, Shannon was what's left from last year's capital from vehicles. Uh, that outfit of that vehicle would only be about fourteen thousand, two hundred forty dollars, nineteen cents, so that's a lot less than the thirty five.
So we shouldn't have to cut fifteen hundred to do that.
Uh, being that she said that twenty one thousand.
Cut seven hundred and fifty dollars now, right?
So looking at non-contractual. And again, this is, I don't have the exact breakdown of it, because it's affected by what, what gets charged to the sort utility. Um, but looking through what I have here, give me one moment, I'll walk through.
There's been a fourteen, well, you got a seven or fourteen, yeah, so actually be less than seventy.
It looks like the total amount there would be about twenty two thousand, nine hundred and eighty two dollars of non-contractual.
Twenty two thousand, yeah.
All right, so we'll keep that in the back of our mind and figure things out.
So. Next year, twenty twenty five, we're gonna get some tax from the, I'll call it coals, what do I have? Yeah, I was gonna say, I think it's under a hundred thousand dollars.
A hundred grand, okay.
All right.
So, maybe next year that will cover almost a.
A police car, right?
Or a truck, yeah.
Not, not, not gonna help us now.
Anything unfortunate Joe comes in with is two hundred grand now. Well, what, what happens if we really needed a truck? Like, how, should they tell us we have to cut everything out of the budget to get this to buy something?
A bond.
Yeah, right.
We always have the bond question.
Right.
You know?
That's what Andrew was saying earlier, right?
Yeah.
Without getting into the details, you can always bond. But if you're gonna bond, bond. Yeah, get everything you need.
That's exactly what we had to do the first, yeah, we got back, that's what we're trying to avoid. You're trying to be responsible, you get penalized for it.
Andrew, what's our bond, uh, repayment every year? I saw that figure somewhere. Sure. And what interest are we paying on, you know, out of the hundred thousand or whatever it is? Bond principal's two fifty five, note ninety six thousand, interest on bonds, three hundred and sixty six thousand. We have seven hundred and thirty two thousand. Four years. At fair. Yeah. So. It's gonna be eight, nine hundred thousand.
But, you know. Yeah, but what do you have to bond every year? Just to buy a car or buy a truck? I mean, that's what's so absurd here, right?
So currently, if you're paying it for your bond, it's two hundred fifty five thousand dollars, and you're paying uh, five percent interest currently on the newer bonds, um, which it changes throughout the, the life of that bond, it goes down as low as four percent. That's not until twenty thirty six, so a long ways off. Um, and then it goes back up to four point one two five in twenty forty, and then fluctuates a little bit back and forth from there. Um. And then you have your bonds that were issued in two thousand eleven, um, they're at four percent.
We're basically like, living like a federal government now, where great grandkids be paying for a, a dump truck and a police car.
And, and actually, let's pause the conversation for one second, because it's further in our package. And. And I'm gonna start off by saying, IT costs are completely out of control.
Right, right away.
Uh, completely out of control, I can't believe.
I'm seeing six hundred and fifty dollars.
By, but these are the numbers that we're almost forced to do what's in our packages this time around.
Several of those, yes.
Right, but is that, are those numbers anyways in here?
Um, I, we met with John Paul the other day and tried to do a breakdown of like the number of PCs.
Yeah, no, right, right, right.
Um, and I think we're gonna need twenty thousand, that line, if we do all of those required things and get the three computers, the police department needs, I think.
So there's twenty, Andrew, that's not even just added to your line.
Upgrade a PC, six hundred fifty dollars, something along.
Well, I, I, I don't know, i- if that's the one that I specifically, the one that I thought was i- i- and again, per user, a hundred and twenty dollars a year annually. You know, and then all these other computer were what, four thousand and, and change and stuff like that.
Yeah, the rugged ones for the police department are forty one hundred.
That and, yeah, so I mean, I just was kinda reviewing that before, so that's not even in here either, and I'm judging from reading John Paul, our IT guy's stuff, it's, it didn't really sound like there was an option about not moving forward with at least, I'm not saying about the laptops per se, but, but the rest of it almost sounded like it had to be done. Because we can be compromised at any given time now.
I did talk to him about, we have to have that emergency response plan per the insurance company, and he thought they had to be separate, so he was estimating three thousand dollars each. I asked him if I can get permission from the insurance company, can we combine them, and he said, yes, so I'm hoping that's three instead of.
Rich, is there any co-ops out there to buy computers for police departments? Any type of. I don't know where, uh, and I wish you guys would include me whenever you need to jump off. I'm the liaison, but next time, please let me know.
Then, the price, uh, I mean, I don't know, I didn't even, I mean, that's either vendors, so I don't even know what to look for and what have you, uh, you know.
I think before we move on this, I think we need to talk to somebody at the county level, see if somebody there can help us. Cause it's absurd what I'm seeing, I mean, for twenty three years, I worked on schools and library program, and these figures are just way out of line.
Well, looking at all the other police departments and what they pay, it's about far for that. Um, the one thing that we get that um, we didn't have for a very long time was the incident service, as far as when we have a problem, it's fixed right away. Um, and we can't afford to be down when things go down now, everything is all online. Uh, complaint by the fingerprinting wise, um, our records management, uh, it, it's something that I do value with, uh, with its service. Uh, as far as prices on the, the computers, I, I, I don't know, no, I, I, I could. He, he does, he does, uh, take care of, uh, Philsburg now, um, and, uh, Bridgewater, some other departments, uh, Belvedere. So, you know, if I got numbers from that, would be the same ones that we had.
So Chief, without, and I'm just throwing this out here because I'm looking at a number and seeing that we're in crunch time. Um, a- and as valuable as they are, can we learn to have life without automatic license plate readers?
Uh, the license plate readers aren't costing us any more money.
Well, I just see a line item here for a hundred and thirty one thousand.
That, that's a grant.
That is a grant, okay.
Right.
So in actual, in actuality, that grant is going to be saving us, cause our server for our license plate reader has, needs to be replaced, so if, uh, in that grant, I wrote in to have, uh, cloud storage as opposed to buying a new server. And that grant is paying for that, so for twenty three years, um, so yeah, we could get rid of, if we got rid of all the police, the license plate readers, you know, it's just a lot of equipment that we bought and now we can't use.
Right, well, I was just, I didn't see that it was a grant, I mean, we're, we're, we're digging deep up here, and so that number stuck out to me, and maybe we have to go back to the old fashioned way.
That's the choice, yeah, every year I say the same thing, we cut the budget so much with compost, and then the second thing I always say, when we get to this point, it's like playing whack-a-mole. We're playing whack-a-mole.
Well, I mean, I just, you know, in our conversations here today and trying to come up with this, I mean, I can already see a, an area that's gonna get beat up a little bit, and, and the bottom line is, if, if you can beat it up now, but it'll cost you way more in the, in the long run.
That's what they're doing, they're forcing you to to either cut to the bone, which we already are, or to just charge it.
Right.
Bond, charge it. It's almost like they want you to just keep bonding. And just be in debt forever, that's what it seems like they want. I mean, that, this is crazy, what we're talking about.
I see a line item here for.
Part of the problem is, is we we're private, too conservative fiscally, I hate to say that way, in the past, because if we have to budget up more, we feel have to spend more.
Well, I didn't say that right along, over the twenty years, conservatism did not become our best friend.
No.
Your gasoline at sixty six thousand, four hundred dollars. Your gas just went up twenty five cents a gallon.
Yeah, it's, yeah, I hear it's something on the long haul here too.
Depending on how it is this year, next year you might be much worse shape.
Right, right.
So.
Buy two hundred and fifty thousand dollar electric cars. And tell us you stopped and stay hundred.
A- a- and again, it's, I mean, we're only in month or four, but the three, the court numbers aren't looking promising. Our contribution to that looks to be like it's gonna be bigger than last year. No, that's not good.
But how do we rectify it?
Well, that can only be rectified on the state legislative level. We can't.
I don't know where Rich gets around, complaining every municipality, right?
They lose money.
Uh, yeah, nobody's making.
There's gotta be somebody.
It's funny, everybody always says, that's, they just do it to make money, and every municipal court's a loser.
The state, yeah.
Right, right.
Money maker.
I mean, it'd be nice if they at least made court costs break even with courts, that's all, I'm not, don't make no money.
Let us pay for the court, then take the percentages off the top, like a profit.
Right.
Like, like, like the shareholder.
But we can, we can talk about all that I want, that's not happening until, right, at least not this year. Maybe some better minds will get something worked out there. Andrew, our farm leases, does that money go into open space or that, does that go into our operating?
I believe those all go to open space.
Open space.
Does it open space?
Yeah. Does it have to go to open space?
I don't know the answer to that question.
Can you find that out?
I can definitely.
Well, actually, I think Frank Pinto has said, yes, but what we are doing is taking the mowing, right, the mowing out of that, so.
So this kind of run its own.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, just to.
But our farm leases, uh, isn't it over fifty thousand? Fifty six, fifty nine thousand, something like that. And I think we're only taking, uh, out of, uh, open space around twenty nine thousand. No, I think it's more like forty three or forty four. What did I see? Right, that's about right, right?
Forty three, forty.
Forty four.
Forty four.
So there's not much wiggle room there. I mean, I don't see, well, other than the annual contribution that we have to make to the employee situation, you know, that number's pretty solid. I don't know what the lease numbers are gonna turn, when do they go up?
Then we take money out of there, like with both the equipment and.
There's some, sure, just bits and pieces that had to be used for.
Yeah.
Um, right. Um right now, I'm not seeing. Any of the needs to be able to come out of that.
Should be that substantial, like no repairs.
Right, right.
Could we bought two machines in a matter of like two years, right?
Uh yeah. And I imagine there's some hours getting wrecked up on them badly.
It's only a somewhat, you know, like you go out there.
Frank had said, uh we probably get together in like June.
Alright, so next year, and next year, we're gonna do the five-year gig? So it might be.
We're gonna bring that up at executive session, I had uh discussions with Frank in the same thing, so.
Okay.
We'll discuss that later.
Well, right now, I guess we're at a. Did you, did you take out the uh reduce that thirty-eight thousand down by the fourteen fourteen thousand he said he found? Or yeah, fourteen.
Fourteen out of thirty-eight fifty-one, reduce it by fourteen, how much, Rich, fourteen thousand?
Hopefully then we don't have to cut anything, well, a couple hundred dollars.
Um, quick question, uh the IT for the computers was brought up, that'll be a capital end, does that have to get added in, the twenty thousand for that?
Uh, yeah, it sounds it. So Chief, again, not to be picking on your budget, but I see a number here that's. Well, I see your um miscellaneous other expenses. We adopted seventeen thousand and change, you use seventeen thousand and change, this year proposed at ninety thousand and change.
Those numbers are reversed, it should be eighty-five thousand, the seventeen thousand belongs in the police car.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, those numbers are reversed.
Yeah, but, oh, uh, oh, oh, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so even still, if I needed to steal ten grand. Steal, yeah, that's the word, steal, um. From eighty-five to, oh no, there's no.
Five grand.
Uh it's twenty, uh you expended seventy-three, you bid eighty-five, so you were seventeen off, so I guess if we had to. Knock that one down ten. That's one spot. It'll still leave you eighty thousand in miscellaneous and other expenses, um not horrible.
Did you take that out then, Andrew?
The ten thousand?
The, no, the fourteen thousand he was.
I I took that out.
So, so what do we have to cut out of the budget now?
Okay, so just so we're all on the same page, right now, this is with twenty-two thousand in for the SRO.
Right.
This is with the.
Thirty-eight thousand fifty-one?
Less the fourteen thousand that he had said, and the twenty thousand for the IT for the computers. And right now. Well, we are seven thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars over the tax levy.
How much?
Seven thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Going seventy-four.
We put the twenty in and we took fourteen.
Bob, I know this is open, I don't know if we can include it, but we do have that grant we can apply to through the insurance company to offset some of those required. We thought that'd be about thirty-one hundred dollars.
What's, what's that for?
Um, the insurance company offers a little grant if you're doing these mandatory improvements like the multi-factor authentication, so. We, we might go to put that line in as seventeen or sixteen even. Instead of adding twenty to IT.
So we would still have to, I mean. Without knowing that we're getting the grant, a hundred percent, knowing the amount, we really can't put it into the budget is the problem right now.
Yeah.
So.
And that, that is an estimate, you know, we did, did we, we had some left in IT last year. I I mean, I think I'd be comfortable if you guys, you know, if you went to seventeen. They basically said, I I fill out a piece of paper and I submit it to them and they reimburse us. That thirty-one hundred, it's just.
With, you don't feel comfortable doing that?
No, not without, no, that is real money, yeah. Um, I mean, we could always.
And we're at zero percent raises too yet, right?
The zero percent isn't in this.
It is in this.
Um, Mike Finelli. Uh only because I sold it a little while ago and I know that we've had some. I won't call them heated debates over the years and things of that nature, and it's only gonna pick up a certain end. But without joining the Highlands, weren't they just offering a respectable amount of money? In relationship to stormwater and things of that nature? Without having lots of hoops to jump through?
There, okay. The, there are monies available through the Highlands, but they're available now even. With our position with the Highlands, so that, those grant monies for stormwater compliance, exactly. Um, in fact, we, I think we just asked for fifty thousand dollars in a via a letter to them. Within the last month. So.
On behalf of the ten, okay.
A- and we fully expect to get that, to get that.
Mike, the twenty-three thousand that we're budgeting this year. For the stormwater require, the uh uh upgrades and things to the basins and stuff, which we have to do, um.
Painful.
It is, but I I got the impression that that would pay for it. And so your fifty that you asked for is already earmarked, is there another twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Well, it's it's somewhat earmarked, Donna Becker, you all know Donna, I like to reference her name all the time. She's kinda handling it, uh for our, for our office coordinating with. The clerks and the DPW superintendent, she actually sent an email this afternoon to Lisa and to Joe. For, for them to kind of, uh some questions we need answered, some data we have to get, because we have a a due date. Uh with some information we owe the state by the end of the month, by May first.
So, but basically the number that you've applied for really isn't impactful on our budget, it's. I'm just gonna call a soft cost for being in compliance.
Well, some of it, eh there's definitely some soft costs involved, of course, uh but some of the money is clearly for. Improvements, I mean, you wanna get new inlet heads, uh things of that nature, I mean, I think, Joe. Did you sit sit down with Donna and kinda go over some of this stuff, I mean, as far as what material? No, okay, so but. Yeah, the the mu- you, all you need to do, when you send a letter to the Highlands, you've gotta document. What your intention is for what you wanna spend this money on and kinda give it a little bit of a backup, so it's nothing.
Can we send a follow-up letter?
I suspect, sure.
Not that that helps us out here, but.
Mike, do you want me to forward to my five-year plan of upgrading them hens? I got it to capital stormwater.
Oh, yeah, sure, that'd be good, yes.
Is that the one that's in here, Joe?
Yes.
I can give it right to him.
I can email them and tell you how to do that way.
Yeah, either way.
Thank you.
I got another copy of that, alright, I've seen way too many copies of that already, to be honest.
Oh, this is great, okay.
What are we prepared to do here, uh as far as trying to come up with seven thousand dollars and cut? This, just to get to that point.
Well, Andrew, how much of this that you've added that we can pull out and bond? Cause I think that's the only way we have to, we can go, is to bond this stuff.
It's, it's kinda subjective with the amount that we have in capital currently, I wouldn't recommend issuing debt for that. Cause it's a very small amount.
Well, we, we haven't even gotten to Joe over here.
Totally understand that.
Okay. Um, yeah, we could burn some of that up in a heartbeat if we actually need it, so.
Right now, you have the twenty thousand dollar for the computers, you have the thirty thousand dollars that's the road repair. That we had talked about, that we had talked about last meeting, and then twenty-three eight oh three is the balance for the police vehicles.
Seventy-four thousand.
So, correct, yeah.
And then, yeah, DPW, so we'll keep that in the back of our mind, seventy-four thousand. And let's move on to the DPW and see.
Can I just ask two quick questions, cause I don't know if we've made a decision on these three items, the. Two thousand three thirteen that you were saying for the uh tax collector OE. That you wanted to reduce that ten thousand because the amount that you're expecting back from the pool, are we going to move that number? Or do you wanna leave that as is?
You originally thought it was gonna be like four thousand, it's gonna be a two thousand.
So you want me to take that out of that ten thousand dollar number?
Reduce to ten thousand by.
Ten thousand, was it ten thousand?
It was ten thousand was the OE line for the tax collector.
Yeah, so, and that included the forty-one hundred, right?
The forty-one hundred, right, if I took it out, it would be fifty-nine hundred.
Right, but they, they are willing, twenty-two something, they are, uh, what is it? Right, twenty-two thirteen sixty is what they wanna pay. And I think we're gonna read that tonight.
Instead of forty-one, forty-one seventy-one.
Because the salaries for Eloise and Lisa, you know. They did not get any additional money for that, that's, you know, that's part of Eloise's job to, you know, get the bills out, so. Yeah, there was uh about eighteen hundred dollars, the only thing that we paid extra for was three hours, three and a half hours. Which, which is seventy dollars, so.
If I, if I make that adjustment, then that brings the ten thousand dollar OE down to seven thousand seven eighty-seven. And just to keep the running. Um, that puts us five thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars over the tax levy down from here.
So would that be said, can I? Pick on the chief again and the ninety thousand eight hundred that is budgeted, just make that. The eighty-five thousand that he got this year?
Eighty-five thousand.
Yeah. And really hope that we can stick, we only spent seventy-three eighty-five, so.
That number is not.
Oh, what's not accurate?
There's some totals in from the end of the year.
Alright, so the seventy-three is up, but do you think it surpassed eighty-five?
I don't know.
Alright, well, okay, well then, let's do it like this, well, I'm not speaking for everybody, this is just what I'm saying. Do twenty-five hundred out of that. And. Twenty-five hundred out of uh roads and repairs. Cause there's a little bit, we're looking for a little bit more on the repairs and maintenance there. I don't know that twenty-five hundred is gonna kill. Uh Joe's budget, I still think we'll be able to do a respectable amount of crack filling and this, that and everything else.
Oh dang, I want the claw for the backhoe.
And that's really only a very small piece of Joe's wishlist, but it's the only, it's one thing that would help us out significantly. And that's back to thirteen. Do you, Joe, do you think we can? On road repairs and maintenance, if we just lose the twenty-five hundred and come down to three hundred and two thousand. We can still figure out that backhoe attachment at thirteen-five? I mean, maybe a little less crack filling, a little less something, or. I know one of the things you were hoping to do was doing some paving up in the the heights area this year, maybe it'll have to. Right, maybe it'll have to just hold off until maybe next year when we do talk about a bond. But would that be said, although there aren't a lot of potholes in most of the roads around here, until you get to the heights. You know, that roads are getting pretty old.
Poor roads have been neglected, but terribly.
But.
I hate to see you pushing something next year, cause what, next year.
I've been saying that for years, but I think next year maybe is when we.
Uh, the two, the two other items that I had on the uh on the list there, I'm not just selling them off page two. Were the uh, the two radios for the cars, um. It's just an explanation of that is that the uh county is uh putting, I believe it's three million dollars into the. Upgrade of the radio towers. Uh, and two of the radios in our cars will not work once that upgrade goes through, which. They're, they're hoping to get that done this year. And if that switch over happens and those radios won't work, cause they're going from analog to digital, I believe, is is what they're actually.
But aren't they buying the radios too?
No.
Then what was, what was us all inventorying, all of our radios and things?
They wanna know how many radios are out there and they just.
So they could potentially come and tell me that I I I'm gonna talk to the, I I need to buy twelve radios? For the ambulances and the squad members?
Yeah, so I believe that a lot of the radios that the squad has are the ones that they bought originally, or were they the? And if they are, those ones are convertible.
Okay.
The, the two radios we have are two new ones, uh. That we bought, um not from what they had given us, and they're not uh able to be uh switched.
Alright, okay.
Let's ask Andrew this then, we can't put money in that we anticipate from a grant because we don't actually have it. We don't know, we're gonna actually have to buy those radios until they make change. And that, say that happens in October, and we just at that time have to come up with an emergency funding for something. Like, do we have to include it in the budget if we don't really know it's gonna be an expense?
To the, to the point that you brought up, if you have to do an emergency, you would have to raise it in your twenty-five budget.
Yeah.
So it would be.
So we'd be starting out next year, you'd be telling me you gotta cut.
Wow, we've been there too already, right?
The other was the Alco test. Uh, right, it's this spring, they're going to be completed with that, so uh ours is gonna be out of.
But at least for the part of the year, we are, we're welcome to use either low pad or high in case we need to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know that wasn't a positive, yeah, but okay.
Yeah, I don't know how the state's all gonna feel about it, I mean, I pushed this thing and pushed it, knowing that it was a big expense.
Right.
Um, and now it's come down to it. That time.
So it's a twenty-five and twenty-five you suggested, you, did you take that out then or not?
You are twenty dollars over the tax levy. Twenty dollars. Amazing.
That twenty dollars more of post-its out.
You have a particular line that the post-its should come out of.
We're back even.
We're back even, but we still don't have some of the necessities.
Why do we have to add this done by? So, next budget, I mean, next meeting, are you hoping to drop the budget?
I mean, just for, take twenty dollars out of lighting. About three lighting, I mean, we spent seventeen-five, we budgeted nineteen thousand for it this year. Maybe it'll only be eighteen-seven.
What's that?
The street lighting, there's. There's thirteen hundred dollars to go, twenty dollars shouldn't make or break that line.
Is everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Well, you'd think it'd be less, but yeah, solar and wind aren't really uh inexpensive.
Due, due to rounding, it's gonna be twenty-one dollars.
So then the other part, you're talking about bonding, you're at seventy-five thousand roughly now. And what, what, other than that, thing for the road crew, what else, what were you, what were you hoping for, Joe, like, was running a big item?
Right, I don't know, they can bond for how, but if you're gonna bond, bond for the all travel. Right, yeah, there's sixteen, and then we wanna preserve one of the uh, big dumps. Uh, we wanna put a body on it.
Yeah.
And you know, a forty thousand dollar body versus a two hundred thousand dollar truck. Two hundred and fifty now, right, so you know, that'd be a worthy.
Two hundred thousand?
Uh, forty. Sixty one hundred, a hundred and fifteen with the thing, and I don't wanna go too far ahead, but if you're bonding. I I know this was more of a wish, the plan four to six years, but if you're bonding, is this the year you buy the tractor and the roadside mower? If you're bonding. You know, if I'm putting it all on a credit card, let's get it all now. So that we're not having this conversation four years from now.
Like, it's gonna be happening in twelve months.
Well, well, that's true too. Get the police cars. Don't even worry about one next year.
Well, not getting one this year. What we budgeted for was only make.
Make that get a upgraded, new one, right?
You throw another hundred on to the bonds?
Throw another hundred for at least one new one then this year.
It's a possible road.
Oh, yeah, we have to go up to twenty percent rate for that, the bonding, is it twenty percent?
Yeah, I thought it was five.
So it's fifteen thousand. So I had the fifteen, the the fifteen thousand we're back in that we have to cut again, okay?
Well, we do have money in our capital improvement fund, we have twenty three thousand dollars, that's what I was looking at, that's why when you said twenty, I was, yeah, because it's twenty thousand dollars. Um, yeah, we do have twenty three thousand dollars in our capital improvement fund, so we could use that. As a source.
So will we tell him to come back next month with the budget that he's got, two hundred thousand dollars, three hundred thousand dollars worth of bonds? Yeah, it certainly sounds so likely. How long would this bond be?
At three hundred thousand? I would, based on, I actually, it's all on equipment, so it's probably not more than ten years?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna say, I would, I would talk to bond council about that, about what. They would think, because you might be better off going with the short term notes, planning on budgeting to pay them off over the next several years, that might be a better option for you. Um, and it also gives you a little bit of flexibility, because you don't have to, you're not required to pay uh, minimum pay down. For the first three years that you have those notes, again, I never recommend that, you wanna pay it off as quickly as possible. Um, but I think that they would be be better able to advise you on that. Um, because going out for for a longer term bond, I don't think would really. Fit with what we're, what we're dealing with.
I don't wanna go at all. Pete, are there other vehicles out there that aren't the Tahoe type that might be a little less than a hundred thousand dollars? He gave us the other option, what was it, was it four, was it a ten thousand? The ten thousand. Well, they they fall into a different area in our budget, right? For sake of time, is that what we're telling Andrew to go with?
I guess.
You'll just go through and summarize the changes that I've made and where we're at. So as far as changes that we made on the, on the appropriations side, we added in the twenty two thousand dollars for the XRO. We took down police OE by the twenty five hundred dollars. We took down road repair and maintenance by twenty five hundred dollars. We took down street lighting by twenty one dollars. Twenty one dollars. We added in the twenty thousand dollars for the IT computers. We put in the police vehicles of point three eight oh three, which is the thirty eight thousand, less the fourteen thousand. And we are currently. Eight thousand four hundred and eleven dollars below the available cap. And we are ready even on the tax level cap.
You made up that one dollar somewhere?
Cut it by one more and put a dollar there.
Okay, so you know what you need to get information for, let us know.
I've got everything, actually, I was telling, oh, do you wanna know the the tax impact? Overall, okay, um, right now, so that's a five point three cent. Tax increase seven point four one percent. For the average home at two hundred and seventy two thousand dollars, that's a hundred and forty four dollars or twelve dollars a month. And for each assessed, for each hundred thousand dollars of assessed value on a home, it's a fifty three dollar annual increase. So it's fifty three for a hundred, one oh six for two hundred, one fifty nine for three hundred, and two twelve for four hundred.
And that basically was not, that was just really with what. We we were mandated to go up, that that part of it, we really didn't buy anything.
No, you're.
Andrew, how much did health insurance fill up? I have an audience here tonight, I like for them to know. You know, that, we have no control.
Let me bring that figure up.
And the pension.
So the combined change for the pensions was twenty six thousand dollars. Uh, the increase for the healthcare was fifty six thousand dollars. Um, you wanna know what that's an increase of, based on what last year's bill was?
Sure.
So it's about a twenty three percent increase in the healthcare costs. And you have about a. You have, you have a fifteen percent increase in your PRS and a point four percent, or four percent increase rather, in your uh, in your PFRS, which is the police and fire. Um, and then you also had an increase in your insurance of about ten percent by eighteen thousand, so there was a hundred thousand dollars of completely uncontrollable. Cost increase. Um, and basically what that equates to is about a. One point seven cent increase for the average half. I'm sorry, for all taxpayers.
And and last year, the healthcare, the the health insurance, that went up significantly. Last year also, even more than that than this time, right?
It's bad, it was, it was worse last year, actually, but it's still, it's.
No, but it's still impacting what we're doing today.
Yes, it's very high relative to what it was a couple of years ago, year over year.
Vicky, good to see you. Always glad to have a school board here. Vicky was here for years, and she uh, is now representing our township on the Phillipsburg School Board, so. You know, that's two nights a week, plus your committee meetings, and then with our regular school board.
Seven meetings a month.
Right, 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 so, you know, Vicky, we're gonna cover the SRO officer for this year.
Thank you.
But how are we gonna do it next year, because it's twenty two thousand for the second half of the year? Or for uh, September through the end of the year, it's forty four thousand, at least for next year. And we're struggling here, so trying to find some room in here, and hopefully the governor will come back and give you some uh, some good news. Yeah, so, but you got, we got you covered for this year.
Thank you.
Andrew, need anything else?
I should have the uh, draft up to, done within the next few days for her review. And um, once everything's done, I'll send her a copy, and then they hear an introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor and committee, good to see everybody. Uh, as you may know, once a year, we. Celebrate recognized birthday, birthday is coming up April twenty second. And in our community, what we do with the middle school is we have a essay contest. To raise the awareness of the students and to actually get ideas on something related to the environment. So again, my name is Barry Glasson, I'm a member of our township's environmental committee. And people may not even have known that we have an environmental committee, but we do, for many years. Uh, and they've been on the committee for, I don't know, somewhere around twenty years, started when I was ten. And. Uh, if I may, we're, we have three winners from the essay contest here in the audience with family members. So what I'd like to do is tell you a little bit about these three essays and the winners. And then if we can, we'll call each winner up, get a picture with the mayor and the committee, and we give that an award, a well deserved award. So this past year, the topic that we chose to. Uh, give to these students to write an essay about had to do with what's called PFAs. PFAs, as they're referred to, they're also known as forever chemicals. They're really bad for all of us. They have been around since the nineteen fifties. They're used to, uh, they're they're used to, for carpeting, to make them stain proof. They're used in cookware, so that the uh, food doesn't stick to the uh, the cookware. Many other applications, and these PFAs really don't go away. They seep into the water, they seep into the food, the uh, one of the government agencies. Has reported numerous times that unfortunately, every human in the United States probably, well, actually. About ninety seven percent of all of us have traces of PFAs in us. They cause health issues, increased uh, allergy issues, even cancer, uh, on and on, so it's bad. And we asked the students this year, what can we do to avoid them? And some of the answers we got were fantastic. In fact, I wish we could take credit, but just about a week ago. The uh, current administration passed rules. Making it more difficult to even use PFAs. Manufacturers are not gonna be able to do that anymore, alternatives are coming out. Uh, so I I I wish I could say that the three students had a, you know, an impact on that, but what's gonna happen in the future? What we really hope, by raising the awareness of this generation. That hopefully, somebody, at least one person, one student, if not more, will. Find more ways to stop manufacturers from using those types of chemicals. Or making those types of decisions, or finding a way to have even better alternatives standing wrong. So that's why we make an effort as a town, as an environmental commission, to reach out to students. In this case, we focus on the seventh grade science class each year. So a lot of thanks to the principal and your seventh grade science teacher. For helping to facilitate and get this essay contest, we had a great number of students, I believe it was close to eighty again, essays that came in. And it was hard for the uh, committee, we had, we had to sit and read each one, which we did. And it was hard, because there were a lot of good ones, and we picked out the best three. So I'm gonna tell you a little bit, I believe we have certificates.
Yep.
Okay. And then you tell me where's the best place for a photograph?
So you should just do it there in the middle of the floor.
All right. So. Let's start with a particular essay. The third place winner. Pointed out that food wrappers and food containers are an issue, which is true. All those, all the food packaging that we get that's in plastic containers or wrappers, it all has PFAs on it or in it. And unfortunately, that seeps into your food and into you. This person pointed out that there was an alternative, they're called Gen X chemicals that are different. And they're probably going to be used now going forward, now that our government stepped up and has said no more of them. What we also liked about the third place winner, uh, he mentioned that we have to motivate the manufacturers to not use PFAs. Well, our president, Hercule, and the decision was made that these manufacturers aren't gonna be able to do this uh, so much anymore at all. So our third place winner is Jack Flynn.
And where would you like to hang on it? Okay, why don't we come up, yeah, you are getting a fifty dollar gift cards, gift cards at Target.
Thank you.
Yeah, use it well.
All right, our second place winner pointed out that filtering water is extremely important. Buying fresh food and vegetables that are not prepackaged makes perfect sense. Avoid the brands of the manufacturers who are being difficult and don't wanna stop using PFAs. That's a good one, just don't buy their products. And overall, continue to raise awareness like we're trying to do. So our second place winner gets a seventy five dollar gift certificate to Target, and our winner is Julia Toledo. Got it, okay, the second place winner has to give a speech. And our first place winner focused on taking regulatory action, there you go, we need new laws, we need to outlaw PFAs. Also, don't throw items with PFAs into the trash, why? Because it's all hitting the landfills. The landfills, everything in it seeps into the water, eventually, that's just getting back to all of us in the water supply. So very good point there. Also, our first place winner mentioned that there should be more collaboration between the scientists, the agencies. Researchers and the manufacturers, that's what really got us as a committee. The idea that instead of people just arguing over what to do or what not to do. People need to get into rooms or tables, discuss it, collaborate, figure it out, that's what. Uh, this next generation, hopefully, they do a lot more of that than my generation is doing right now. So we really appreciated all those comments from our first place winner, who's gonna get a hundred and twenty five dollar gift card to Target. Nick Russo. Congratulations again to John. You've embarrassed. One more round of applause for the winners. And you have a lot to be proud of. And again, thank you to the committee, professionals, everybody, for allowing us this time. And we look forward to doing it next year. If any of you have brothers or sisters in lower grades, start to get them prepared now, right? You've got the edge.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
Good job, everyone.
All right. Let's talk about the budget.
We've talked about for an hour. We're done. Come back when you're back, Bill, and yell at us. Enjoy those wings, Jack. Good seeing you. Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from March twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any questions, comments, corrections, volition?
University?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
And it?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. We accept the Treasury report in April, bill list, interim bill list. Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, anything, polls, any items? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes. Looking for a motion to accept the tax collectors' tax and soar reports for March. Anybody want to make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Anybody second?
Second.
A second. Any questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes. Yes. Police department report. Trent, you have anything you want to add?
Nothing.
Anybody have any questions, Chief?
I see overtime is pretty substantial this month. We're still dealing with boroughs around town on disability.
Yeah. That's going to be a long term issue too, it looks like.
Right, I see that. I was gonna say, I also see Chief and, and, and I don't know, and you can answer it easily. Under training, there's twelve hours of OT there too. Um, because I know that our, our, our officers need to train. Um, it just worked out schedule wise that they needed to do it on overtime? Uh, they didn't. I don't think they did it on overtime. They were moved, like they were on a night shift. They were pulled from that to go to the training and then their shift had to be covered. Okay, all right, okay.
That's it.
Yeah.
You got to wrap your.
Yeah, right, 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 right.
Okay, okay, roll call, Lisa. Oh, we don't need a roll call. That was, he was talking about the, okay. That's it then? Everybody's done with Chief?
Yep.
EPW, Paul, you giving it?
Uh, well, I mean, it was pretty self explanatory as to what was done. You can see that, you know, we are, they're into their summer hours because they come in early. You know, everything's being mowed. There's been some, you know, obviously some storm damage over the last couple of weeks that they've dealt with. Uh, there's been a couple of sinkholes too, particularly at the school. Um, and just basic maintenance and stuff, but, you know, they're pretty much on point for where they need to be. Most of the equipment and everything seems to be ready to go, so they're in good shape. And I knew that Joe had to leave here.
Yeah.
Um, so just on that subject matter alone, I a lot of appreciation for the work that he and Lisa and Chief uh, and Shannon and everybody did with the, the grant that we just received. Um, I know that Joe put a lot of time in on that too, and I meant to thank you for it while he, he was still here in public this year. But anyway, but no, that's it on that report.
Okay. And those are on summer hours because I see, I'm getting my emails much earlier. Lisa, County Clerk, before you have anything to add?
I, I don't, I just wanted to remove my request that you guys want to on the record authorize Tammy to begin that pet census. I don't think we had a vote on the record. And it's worn out now, so it's done there, so. And Paul, did you say you thought?
But yeah, did we establish a a, a number for that?
We had estimated.
Okay, that's what I kind of thought. How much?
Three to four, but I think it can be, you know, absorbed in the current budget. We weren't adding.
Was that included in what we're talking about?
Call you in yourself.
I had just said that he's going to call back saying, hey, take this out. You're adding that and take this out. Okay, so.
Can we include cats? We're allowed to do this. The, the two of the dogs might as well come down. We have cats as well and it's, it'll take a lot more man hours to do both. Or I think going house to house? But we don't currently license cats, so the licensing part of it would take a lot more time.
So we can at least get a census, you know.
Yes, she will be documented, just so that we have an idea. Yes, I'm sorry.
Maybe, maybe that's one of the things that we stuffed envelopes with too.
Right.
It's on the list.
Yeah, is it?
So Lisa's looking for an answer. What do we want to do? Do we, how is it okay?
Yeah, that's what we want to do. Or, and yes, if that's what we want to do, but hell, we're taking twenty dollars for post-its, you know, do we not do a dog census for four thousand bucks?
Yeah, I mean, that's a fair point.
I mean.
Hopefully we'll recruit that money by them coming in and either reissuing fines.
I do, well, I do believe that there are far more dogs than are being licensed, but I don't know that that's a break even number or anything like that. I mean, maybe if it was done annually, you know, certainly not the first season per se. I mean, I mean, Lisa, what's the actual number of dogs that we've licensed?
I think the number this year is somewhere around like one forty currently.
And I, I think we all know there's more than that, just one neighborhood alone.
This was kind of an effort to offset some of those, you know, the.
Yeah.
We just had one for almost nine hundred dollars.
But I mean, I, 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 you know, I'm kind of okay with it. I know we've talked about it. But I mean, if we're you know, that severe on money, uh, uh, you know, maybe we revisit it. I mean, I don't think we, if we talk about it for another month, it makes that much of a difference.
Budget, so.
Well, it is in the budget, right, right.
So will you send you a table for a month?
I, I don't know. You know, I'll defer to everybody else on the subject matter. I mean, if things are that right, I mean.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, Lisa, you just mentioned we got a bill for nine hundred dollars?
It was just under nine hundred dollars.
For what was done?
Uh, for, I think two feral cats were picked up and they were.
Neutered, vaccinated, brought back to health.
I, I think we should not be doing that either.
We have choice, right? Once, once the ACO picks them up, I don't think they have a choice.
It's all regulated by the state. I'm stunted by, nobody's claiming that they're their cats. Can we do that?
I don't know if they're big on euthanizing. We're pretty much.
How much is expensive?
Three hundred bucks for euthanizing, probably.
Totally, that.
So you save three hundred.
Wow, but anyway, so.
I'm not sure of that number, but I've heard people say pretty highly. Called for two fifty, three hundred to euthanize a dog, so. Cats are a little smaller, maybe. Okay, so roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
So any code enforcement or anything?
Uh, actually, yeah, I saw, well, no, I mean, his report in here is, uh, pretty efficient wherever it got to, um.
It came today, so it's on that.
Yeah, obvious, uh, on the extra one you have. You know, obviously, our biggest problem, and it would take a long time to explain to everybody, been here. One of our biggest violations that are going on right now is drapes joined out on twenty-two. Um, there's no health department. Uh, inspections going on out there. They failed. It's been revoked. They don't have a business license. They've been completely unapproved by the township. And yet the system seems to allow them to proceed. Um, so Jeff and everybody's working on, you know, trying to make them A, be compliant and or B, shut it down, whichever comes first. Um, my suggestion is don't eat there. You know, there's a problem. Uh, but that's it on this one, amen.
Anybody else? If you have any questions or anything about it?
Yeah, same as you started.
Court report is.
Thank you.
Sad.
I saw that, yeah, again, it's not generating, there's a, a flat number to run the courts. And just by looking at the last three months, we're going to fall way short of revenue to pay for the fixed costs. And I, I'm not quite sure why that is at this stage of the game. I mean, maybe it improves over the summer and things like that. And, and again, we've all said that we don't make money on tickets. But at the same rate, tickets have to offset some of the costs of the court. You know, so there's a necessary evil there. But there's fixed employees, fixed cost, fixed judge, fixed this, everything that we have to pay for. So you hope to get at least enough revenue to break even. We're not breaking even. We're not even close to breaking even. So I don't even want to see us be even worse shape than where we've been. Um, but that's the court report.
Okay, anybody have any questions? Thank you, Paul. ACO report, so we have four calls for the month. And obviously, nine hundred something dollars paid for.
And is she supposed to be chasing?
Yeah.
Groundhogs around a, a commercial parking lot? I thought we were only doing domesticated.
Yeah, because I thought the one time we talked about clocks and she said she won't get.
Right, that's what I thought, right, right. Although if there's a potential rabid raccoon, she does take it and they cut the head off and do the brain test, so maybe that falls into, and not looking real pleased there. It's the only way to test for rabies, Shannon. Uh, maybe that's the same thing with groundhogs. Could be.
Okay, looking for a motion to accept the police department, EPW, township clerk zoning and code enforcement court report and ACO report. Anyone make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Barson? Yes.
Committee report. Lily, you have anything?
I was just, did you get an answer back from open space about the ventures? Remember I gave you that?
We did not meet.
Oh, okay.
We meet May first. First Wednesday and May.
Otherwise, nothing else is going on with, with them.
Okay, Edith?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, we got the letter from the school district about the forty-one hundred, about forty-one hundred dollar bill. And I'm in agreement with them, the twenty-two thirteen, which is the actual cost of the printing of the tax bills, the envelopes and the postage. And then there's three and a half hours of overtime that we pay the office assistant and the assistant CFO, I think, put in a half hour. So, you know, tax collector and the municipal clerk, you know, they're in overtime, so.
I, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, it all comes down to the same pockets anyway.
I've been saying that for years.
I'm kind of okay with it, but I'm a little no, it's not a big deal that they were beefing about it. There'd have been no expenses. They're the one to call for it. It should have been on with the primary and or the November. You know, to have a special election. Well, I don't believe, because you can.
Well, they couldn't wait until the November one. Well, probably even June was too late, right?
November, you can't do bonding for buildings, correct?
Right.
So that's why you have to have a special election.
Okay.
But I was under the impression that that bill was for the November election, not, not with the one in.
No, no, this bill is for the, uh, this was for, no, 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 this is for the additional tax bills that went out. We had to do a separate mailing for the tax bills in November.
Right.
And no, from November.
From November. Now, I'll defer to Lisa. Did we get a bill from the county? Do they go for a special election and they eat the cost?
They're billing directly to school, right.
They're gonna go, okay, all right, so. So this is just for the, the bills and the.
Well, like I said, comes out, it comes out of the same pockets.
It was for every, they're, they're in tough, tough, we're in tough, they're in, they're in tough spots, so. Right.
So you're going to deduct the twenty.
Yeah, yeah. Right, so.
We're gonna give you what you said.
What you want, yeah, you were the, you were the chair on that one, so you were right on that one. So the only other thing, and I'll defer to our former liaison, you know, they got killed with the new budget that came out from the governor.
Yes.
And hopefully, they're going to get some of that money back. Uh, they're short one board member, and is it this month that you're going to interview?
We're going to interview.
Next week.
This month.
Okay, so that's next one, say.
Point for the following month, because I think we get ninety days or something like.
Okay, and then that's all I really have, you know, and if you want to add anything, you know, you're fearless leader, never, maybe she's watching online. She says she watches this online.
Wanted the opportunity to thank the committee for supporting the SRO because, you know, safety and security of our students in the lab is our number one priority, and it's something that's so desperately needed. But, you know, we're in dire straits. We just, you know, couldn't find the money for it. So we appreciate you doing that and, you know, every little bit helps. Twenty-one hundred might not seem like a lot, but, you know, it can help out a program.
Right.
So we appreciate all your help, everything that you've done. Thank you.
And I'm sure Rich, our chief, is keeping his eye out for any other grants that might be able to be used for that, you know, who knows what? Twenty twenty-five.
And he'll get some of that money, that five seventy-five that we lost.
Yeah.
What the five hundred that we raised from the two questions in November.
Got wiped out.
Got wiped out.
Right.
And some.
Yeah, right. I don't know.
Crazy.
Yeah, I'm done.
Paul, you have any? Yeah, I do. Um, the environmental uh, committee, which Barry was just hearing, everything else like that, and it's in our packages. Um, but they've got some concerns that they wanted the township to committee to be aware of. One of the first ones Bob brought up is the notification of if there was a problem in Merrill Creek. And I guess the current process is to notify everybody via cellphone. But you have to be on a list, so you have to sign up and put yourself on that list. And he'd like a note on our website about how to do that if need be. And again, although Joe's not here, I know that we were also trying to talk about doing something town-wise that you would have to sign up for to communicate. But we'll worry about that one next time.
Yes.
Um, uh, they're also very concerned when the farmers around here do some large spraying. And I know that the spraying, some of it's seeding, some of it's this, but they that if it was taking place around the parks, they think the park should be closed uh, to avoid drift. Um, but with that being said, and I don't know the aerial rules as well as I do some other rules, that's supposed to be taken into consideration when they spray about drift. I mean, that's one of the most important things. So I know that they have to notify communities and this and that if they're doing certain things. Um, but I think maybe we should reach out to the farmers around our recreational parks, be it down on Beatty's, Thomas Stewart, Stacker, to see what is being used and what the protocol is so that we have a better understanding of it. Uh, this one here, I think, is a, a, a real reach, well, actually the next two, but they certainly wanted to make us aware of it. Uh, groundwater quality should be monitored. Obviously, municipal water is monitored, but there's a lot of Greenwich Township that are on wells. And I certainly don't think it falls onto the and this is just, I'm looking at it today, it's just a quick opinion. I don't think it falls on the town to monitor everybody's well. I think if you have some concerns, you know, you call.
I think what they would do there though is, I meant to ask you several times, do you, who, who does testing around here? Maybe we put that, recommend some testing company.
Yeah, there's Garden State Labs, there's a few. Yeah, there's a few, one in Milford, one in Clinton, right, right, yeah, yeah.
Maybe we ought to just put them on.
We could reach out, sure.
Because actually, I'm looking at mine, I haven't had my test in a couple of years.
Right, so I mean, so that, you know, and again, I believe groundwater quality is important. I just don't know that it should fall on to the town to monitor everybody's well. And, uh, their, their other big concern is They're concerned about particulates, uh, carbon particulates being emitted from the trucks. Be it just driving down seventy eight, sitting at the weigh station, uh, going through town in general, the lines at the weigh station. And and their comment here is they are spewing substantial amount of exhaust fumes that need to be monitored harm for harmful content. I'm not quite sure how you would do that either. Um, but again, they're just bringing uh, this up to our attention, that that's some of the things that they're working on. And the last little piece is, and I I barely touched on it with Brian. Um, and I talked to Frank Pinto, um, both of us have kind of fallen off of our participation on the Muskanetcon watershed. You know, there's only so many meetings in a month and so many exciting meetings in a month. And that is, I I'm not diminishing the importance of it. Um, but I asked Ryan if he would like to sit on that because I know he's big environmental. Things and that's what he went to school for and stuff like that. And he didn't really give me an answer, but I told him I needed to research a few things with Frank because. It could potentially come with a voting right. And I didn't know if. A T C member should be there voting or Ryan could vote for the township in the best interests. And I think if he attends meetings on a regular basis, he would have an understanding of what might come up to vote the next time around. Uh, but Frank Pinto said he could. Um, so if nobody has any objections and that. Ryan wants to accept that, I'd like to appoint Ryan to uh, the Muskanetcon watershed. But let me get an answer for it first before we make a motion and. And talk, I don't wanna point him, he sits on the environmental commission already. Brian Hagerty. Um.
Yep, in relation to Jeff?
I saw.
Oh, it's your son.
Uh, uh, not his eldest, but yes, it's his son. Um, so uh, I just wanted to throw that out, if we wanted to have a conversation, cuz I don't wanna be. Doing something to appointing and all of us not necessarily be on board with it. I mean. Yeah, and then next month we can talk about it once he gives me, because again, you know, the biggest thing that we're concerned right now and and I forget what they're called is. What kind of snails are they? But there's some kind of snail problem going on, you know what I'm saying? Uh, we need to stay on top of that, man. Uh, so that's it on reports.
You know, you mentioned the particulate truck, I'm shocked and though you probably not, the particulate pollution from cars is mainly from the deterioration of tires.
No, I didn't see, is there a report of?
No, no.
Not from the fuel, like you would think.
Really?
Yes.
It's more from.
It's more from. And. That's why they don't think battery powered cars are gonna reduce it because they're heavier. And it causing more particulates coming off the tires.
Yes, that is interesting.
That's interesting, but I mean, I certainly knew the tire wear was in the conversation in the mix.
No, they they say that the the cars are so efficient and the fuel is so clean now, that there's more particular. Pollution coming from the tires and from the.
Michael, there's an issue in New York City that I just heard the other day with these electric vehicles are a thousand pounds heavier than a normal car. And these four or five story parking garages, you load them up. So there was an issue.
Okay.
A week or so ago, yeah, with a a partial collapse, so.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, you're done, right?
Yep.
Professional reports, Mike.
Okay, um, a couple of quick things, uh. The twenty twenty four D O T grant, again, we, I'll I'll just mention it every month, I know we're not gonna go forward this year, but you know, we will have to keep it in mind for next year's budget and so forth. Um. Uh, Beatty's uh, sections one and two, Rich the valve completely wrapped up, so we'll be able to close that out shortly, so that's a good thing. Uh, Comcast. Um, obviously, they are nearing completion, they're, you know, I don't know exactly how many more weeks they're going to be still out there. They still have, they have restoration to do. Uh, my yard, just as one example, they have been back in the weeks and weeks now. Uh, they have been fairly responsive and again, I give credit to Lisa last time and I'll do it again tonight. She really has become like the point person to. For for the public who are, you know, issuing complaints and problems and and someone more. Not even a little happy when they. Send Li- Lisa an email or what have you, so um. So she's been feeling that, we've been involved out in the field with the guys and whatnot, so. Uh. Well, that's again, they they are getting close to being done, they're they're, but still got plenty of work to do.
One thing about Comcast, I'm a little disappointed in them, sorry, Brian's not here, cuz he's brought up. You know, obviously when we. Gave them permission or authorization to come into the township. I figured they had to dig holes and stuff to run wire, you know, I mean, if it's even if it's underground, you gotta dig to get underground to shove the wires through. But nobody said anything about, and one's in my yard, just for disclosure, I'm not really complaining about about my property, but they have these big boxes they're putting up.
The box, yeah.
I never heard them say a word about those boxes. Now let me ask you something, I guess. Is it possible for them to be underground? Like, I assumed if it was where poles were, everything was gonna be on the pole. If it was where underground is, everything was gonna go in those underground boxes. Why do they need these boxes?
Because it it allows them. Access for maintenance purposes, I don't know the answer to your problem. Would they put the box under?
Cause if I would have known that at the time, i- in my yard, at least I have Arbor Whitey is covering it somewhat. But if if I had no shrubs in the front of my house and a beautiful manicured lawn. And I woke up or came home from work one day and saw one of these, and they're at least like. Three feet by four feet by eighteen twenty four inches wide.
Yeah, very un-un- appealing.
I would have never, what, I would have said, no, you gotta figure out a way to put them in the ground. They should be buried. Or on the pole.
Well.
Service electrics are on the pole.
I I can inquire if I, you know, I.
Is there any way we can go back on that to address that? I mean. I know going back is always hard.
Is it within the right away, did you measure?
It is, but but we could give them permission to go in right away, but with provisions, we could have said it has to be all either underground or on poles. I never did have to put these big boxes.
Yeah, their lack of communication. Right from meeting one.
Their car, their communication.
Residents apparently. Wasn't really on par.
It's bad, that that is, that undoubtedly is horrible, their communication.
Well.
But these boxes, I'm surprised I haven't gotten any complaints about them.
I have, and that wouldn't be surprising, Lisa.
Well, I really felt, you know, we were misled on that, I really do.
I don't recall discussion, I guess there really was no discussion about it, right?
No, well, Ryan asked a lot of questions about construction.
But.
And and then he said, we're only gonna dig two by feet by two feet and go down, you know, is, we're gonna, we're very minimal road, you know, and stuff, we're gonna use. He thought they're gonna use existing lines, I kinda did too, but even if they use existing, I figured they'd have to dig down to get to the. So I wasn't worried about the two by twos, but I feel very misled on the boxes. And two, like, the communication was absolutely horrible. For a company that does it all the time, they're they're bad.
Communication wise. You want me to inquire, I think.
I feel misled, I'm gonna, I'll lead in Brian's way on, they, I think they misled us on a lot as we look back.
Yeah, no, no, no argument, I mean, there's been a. I mean, it's, it's been an up and down or or ride with these guys.
For somebody, I think about it, Comcast, they're big, they're huge.
Big, yeah, I'd say so. Yeah.
They do it all the time, it's like it's the first, your first renovation. They're they're terrible. Now, the company's responsive, that Leon and stuff, whenever you talk to a nice guy. Maybe he's just a good frontman, I don't know, but uh. I I just think their communication was far, absolutely horrible, but I'm a little, listen, yeah, I I I don't understand all the.
I could certainly send out an email to a few of them tomorrow and just say, hey, this issue came up to to county county committee meeting last night, you know, what? You know, this, uh, these boxes that you're installing, uh, you know, numerous points in a in a development. Uh, are.
They never told us about.
Yeah, are are outside.
They put it in, I saw them put the level on it, the level, but. Starting to lean, so they're gonna look horrible in people's yards when they're leaning.
Well, they always end up moving, so I mean, you see everybody's with the electric that's there and service electric and. Horizon and so forth, the old, the old ones.
Yeah.
So.
Well, a sort of way to reduce the size, cuz walking in our neighborhood, we've never seen a box that big.
It's huge.
You know. How many wires?
Yeah, I don't, Bob, your description and length, what is bigger than what I, what we've seen?
Walking around our neighborhood, I see three or four thick conduit, I guess that's what you call it, sticking up.
Yeah, right, right in front of my house.
You know, right. So maybe depending on the number of.
You have one in front of your house too?
Yep.
Depending on the number of conduits coming up. Maybe they can go back and say, yeah, we can put a smaller box there. They might have, they might have some extra boxes and they wanna get rid of.
Everything was supposed to be underground or on a pole, that's all they ever said, underground or on a pole.
Alright, then Mike, go back and say, hey. These green boxes are popping and falling places when you said everything on the pole or, you know.
That's the same one in your yard?
No, that actually is bigger. Yeah, that's bigger, this, look at this, this is bigger.
Take a look at that.
Yeah, than what we have, ours are are shorter and not quite as wide.
I don't care what the size, they never told us they were gonna be boxes, everything was either in in the ground.
I got, well, yeah, who who's alpha, I mean, what's alpha?
Well, I guess that's who makes.
That, well, no, ours are, there's no name on the box.
Oh, you know what, that box there, Bob, uh.
Mike.
Mike.
Gotcha.
That's across the street from me, the strip of houses on my, on Hurlem. We have telephone poles across the street and I have the one pole, but my my, most of the homes on my street have undergrounders. Two or three homes that have wiring in the pole.
Because, right.
That's across the street, so that is, that thing is right next, across the street from me, they're right next to a pole.
Like you said.
I guess maybe it's a question of what.
I'm telling you, if I had a nice, well maintained, manicured lawn.
Well, your lawn is pretty well maintained.
And I had this beautiful front lawn.
Right.
If I'm over work one day and saw that in my, in the right away, I'd be living. I'm I'm shocked that I haven't gotten a lot of more call over that.
Okay, I, well, I'll, we'll see what happens, I mean, I can certainly send them something small and, okay, last item. Um, and this is the, I'll call it, what I find to be the most interesting item. I just found out, literally just the other day, uh, Bill Believo was out in my office to go over. A number of different projects that we're involved with with the county, both in Greenwich and out and up towns. Hey, he brought Strikers Road and this issue of this proposed traffic signal. At the end of Strikers and five nineteen. And 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 I just was made aware of this like a couple of weeks ago, because they, they. They, the um, engineer for the county, who's doing the design. Sent me a letter in my capacity as with the Greenwich Township Sewer Utility. To mark out the sewer lines that are going in and out from five nineteen and somewhere near the the uh, intersection. So I'm like, what are they talking about? And I said something to Joe, cuz Joe was copied on it as well, I said, Joe, you know what the hell's going on here? I said, because it's the first I'm hearing about this. And he's like, no, he's like, I I don't know anything, so. We uh. We then looked at it a little further, looked at the plan, they have the, they have. The intersection of five nineteen and Strikers Road and being in the township of Low Patcom. So now I just saw this like a couple of days before I knew Bill Believo was coming to my office, so. And and if if everybody knows, Bill Believo is the county engineer. So Bill comes and we start talking about this and I and I show him this stuff, I'm like, Bill, what is going on? I said, cuz I don't think anybody on the Greenwich Township Committee knows about this, the township engineer doesn't know about it. And uh, that can only be a horrible uh, situation once that thing gets built. I mean, you gotta go back to back signals, terrible.
That's crazy.
They hope, so. He, they wrote a nasty letter to the engineer reprimanding them for not keeping me in a loop as the Greenwich Township engineer, but whatever. That's irrelevant, so I just wanted to, and I sent Lisa some paperwork today that I had. Uh, which basically, it doesn't, I mean, it just, it's very preliminary stuff, that there's no design, there's no, it just, they're they're going to. Be, it looks like they're going to be installing a light at the end of Strikers at five nineteen. To, in conjunction with the warehouses that have yet to be built in Low Patcom. Um, so uh, we're gonna have some opportunity to comment. I mean, this is certainly, and and they're aware of that, and I just, so I just wanted you, did, did anybody know about this?
No.
No, they just. I was contacted, oh, this is a while ago, they spoke to Alex once about it, and one or two commissioners. And yeah, my answer was, we're not paying a dime towards anything there.
Oh, God, no.
Oh, oh, please. Well, no, but you know, the one meeting went through several years ago, they wanted us to help pay for the crosswalk.
Well, that was the crosswalk, though, that was, there was no signal.
Well, they're not gonna put crosswalk in when they do.
Well.
But when they called, they said, we're we're starting to look into, we're gonna do it. And they're, obviously, they said, and it's not gonna cost you anything before you start it, because I always say, I'm, I'm not paying a dime for anything for trucks. It's, yeah, cuz that's my view, Low Pat built the those places.
Yep.
Most, mostly Low Patcom people were troubled by that traffic there. They, you know, they use the cut through the seventy eight, they're the ones that are all backed up and having to pull out. So I said, they should have included that, or you should have included when you just left the warehouses be built, so the only conversation I had with them was, we're not paying anything.
So there's nothing that needs to be done, it's just that I, when I looked at this and I like, did it like a double call.
I'm surprised it came up this quick, though.
Oh, my God, well, I said, oh, my God, wait, the township, if they don't know about this, they ain't gonna like it even a little bit, so. So, uh, well, whatever, I'm sure I'll talk to the county.
Yeah, I'm surprised it's this far along, cuz like I said, when they talked to me, they said, you know, we're probably gonna do it, they weren't even in that. Planing stage.
Well, this is preliminary design, and right now, and if they could go to construction, maybe three, four years, I would think.
Oh, okay, cuz I was gonna say, my, I saw that and I know it's in scale and all that kind of thing and it's small. A tractor trailer is not going to be able to make that left hand turn if a car wants to go left coming out of Strikers at the light. Without running over the pedestrian resting area, I think they called it or whatever.
Yeah.
If you see that cars up there. Not gonna happen, it's not gonna happen.
Yeah, so do you want me, cuz I sent Lisa, when when I sent Lisa the email today and I said, does. Do we, does the township committee know about this? I sent her some some stuff, you want me to send it to you tomorrow, so you, I mean, whatever, for for what it's worth?
Can we not want it there?
Oh, we definitely cannot want it, whether or not that's enough for it not to be built is another story.
Uh, doesn't sound.
I mean, to have, to have those two lights that close together on five nineteen, but they were like five hundred feet apart. Is staggered like that, it will be.
Well, there are, there are other, their answer is gonna be, then we're buy rest and then we knock it down.
Well, that's right, and then just let let Dumont go straight across.
We're losing other hundred thousand dollars in taxes like they do in the library.
Oof, yeah, really right, so. Okay, sorry not to bring, uh, spend a lot of time, but this, I thought this was important, so uh, I'll send everybody the email tomorrow. And we'll keep you posted as things will go, so that's it.
I I got two things for you, Mike.
Oh, you do?
Yes, I do, um. The resident asked me, you're going eastbound on seventy eight, coming up to exit three.
Eastbound on seventy eight.
Come to one seventy three, okay, make a left or a right.
Sounds like a song.
And we put a sign up that says all trucks this way so that they. Avoid going down one seventy three.
This sign is already there.
No, it's about this big.
Oh, no, it's a much bigger than that.
There's two signs there, one to your right.
I asked, I asked to have it put on the back of the big sign with flashing lights.
Can can we increase that sign?
Yeah.
And put it in Spanish as well, because, you know.
Well, even to get that.
Know the answer to that, or can we?
Even to get that sign put back up when it fell down from a windstorm and anything else, I had to go to, who's the. It's no longer the senator. Uh, that dubs to.
Authority?
Yeah.
I had to get him to get D, the uh, D O T to come out there and put that sign up. It was down for so long.
Wow.
And it, and again, it's it's a much bigger sign than it was there, but yeah, I. I mean, I kinda think that sign's enough, but if we need to highlight it or put it something else up there, that's fine, but you're gonna have to, that state D O T.
Right.
They don't care about the signs.
No, no.
The other thing, Mike, is the water project in Franklin Township, how far along are they? Did they go out for a bit for that?
Oh, yeah.
Not yet, okay.
The, they are, uh, we are. Of the last phase, if you will, because there, we, the gas company marked lines out wrong, which caused the conflict, whatever, so. I mean, we're, we're pretty close.
Okay, the reason why I bring it up, cuz Lisa and I had a discussion the other day about. Okay, the reason why I bring it up, cause Lisa and I had a discussion the other day about Haggardys. You know, we did discuss that during budget, but we're gonna have to bond for.
We're gonna have to bond for that.
You know, and.
That, that would probably be a separate and alone bond anyway, cause once we bond, we're gonna done, the state reimburs.
The only thing that I think that we should be having a plan for at this stage of the game is how's it getting to there? And I think there's more than one house there, I think there's two. Behind the Haggardys is Overly's, it used to belong to somebody else.
That doesn't have a dioxide problem.
Oh, I don't know.
Haggardys is the only one that tested positive.
But I would think that for us to even be ready to roll on that, there should be some plan, because. Well, it looks to me like it's going straight through a farmer's deal.
This, this is the way it's gonna go, as far as what's in my head. It's gonna go, uh, from the end of Arbor Drive. And it's gonna go down through the access, through Haggardys access. Through, uh, Overly Field, down to his house, that's what, that's the only way, because some, that's, a lot of that's preserved. So we can't put it anywhere else. So that's, that's.
But we should start to have a plan for that, for when the time comes. Well, you know, we had that figure eight hundred thousand, but I think, we all think that might be too much, I mean, how, how do we even get an accurate? What, two hundred and forty seven dollars a foot?
It's, you don't even, you can't even estimate it yourself, Phil, there are cookie cutter numbers that you just give a quantity. Like, linear feet of pipe as one, hydrants as another, you multiply by the DEP's unit cost, approved unit cost. And you get X, and then you get Y, then you get Z, add them up and that's, that's, there you go, that's the project, that's the budget. And it's, it's a pretty hefty budget, I mean, you know, I mean, it, I don't, can't imagine. It's, it's really, uh, the fact that we've gotta go through all this work and all this expense to, and I know Jeff, but whatnot, this is not an answer. For one house that far away. Is, boy, it's hard to imagine, to be honest with you.
Rich, you probably don't have any other, we go to executive, I guess, perhaps more questions to you than you have for us.
Over in progress now. Okay, old business, municipal complex, bid and resilient community grant award. Well, good news, we've got a five million dollar grant from the state to build the municipal building.
That's, that's awesome, that's awesome.
Let me bring you half of it anyway. So, like I called it earlier, thanks to Lisa and Shannon and Rich.
And George.
Georgine Drinkle for all their work and preparing the, the application on Joe. Uh, preparing the application and, uh, getting all the, all the facts together for Georgine, I guess, to present to them, so. That worked out. Uh, I guess we're gonna have to talk in executive with an attorney to ask some questions about the bid at this point. Uh, but I just wanted, like you said, publicly acknowledge how much work, uh, the employees put into it. Shannon, they bother you too for numbers? No, okay, I was gonna say, I didn't wanna forget you, if you, if they had you digging up numbers. Okay, anybody else have any other? Uh, the other thing under old business, but I don't know if it's ever actually been on here, but Paul and I met with the rep from JCPN L today over in Kennedy Mills Development. And, and, you know, they've been having really some problems with outages. Many, and many times a year for extended periods, and they've been complaining, notifying me. Probably almost four years I've been hearing about it, almost about the same amount. And, and we never realized the speed for that, we think, comes from this place up here on Washington Street. Goes over.
This station.
From that station. Goes over through the fields, goes down New Village Road. And then hooks into the Kennedy Mills half of it, the other half is spent from, she thinks another station, but she, I don't think she was sure.
Yeah, she was, and I think she was referring to greenfields, I think.
She said, well, you know, the line comes through, it's swampy, it's hard for us to service, and I said to her. This is New Jersey, you're talking like we're in Alaska, like you're trying to run electric to Nome, Alaska. I said, it had to be swampy when you put it in, why did you just put it there? So she does, she's not an engineer or whatever, she doesn't know, she's very concerned about it, I told her our next move, if we don't get satisfaction here. Uh, is to notify the BPU and, and our state legislators to get on board, she asked us to refrain from that, she wants to meet with her boss. There, we're gonna have another meeting in a couple of weeks, hopefully with, uh, her, her, her manager. And, uh, to go, I get some people in from engineering to talk about and see what other things can be done. Cause that, it sounded to me, again, not that she was saying this. But those people are out.
I, I, I got an earful about the same thing.
And I, you know, I said, the rest is unacceptable, now, now, you just have to eat it and, and fix it, so. She seems very concerned, she says they aren't really concerned about it already, but she's gonna go back, hopefully we're having a meeting. And she said, we're hoping to resolve it without just having to go over it first.
Where's Stan Prater?
And, and along with that too, uh, um, and not that I know this solves the problem, they're about to spend twenty million dollars on the JCPNL. Infrastructure here in Greenwich Township. You know, so.
Just upgrades all the equipment.
Right, switches. Things so.
I don't, I used to lose a lot, but forty years ago, but they rerouted it to stuff.
Your power's coming from West Portal.
Yeah, well, I lose it a lot.
Anyway.
Between your house and West Portal.
Yeah, that's the problem with this, it goes through the wooded areas, through the fields and stuff, but she said, we trim all our lines. Then they try, they try and say it was homeowners on New Billy's Road, I said, so you're telling me that Paul doesn't trim his lines, I'll depend on the end to trim his trees? Well, they have a right of way, I mean.
They do, they have utilities.
That's what they kept saying, I said, you're acting like we're in the middle of nowhere. She goes, well, it is a rural state, I said, I think we're more suburban, I said, we're rural, go to Wyoming, go to Alaska, go to Montana, that's rural. So, okay, that, anybody else have any old business? New business, looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty twenty four Municipal Alliance Resolution. Resolution forty one twenty four Tax Team, uh, Tax Lane Redemption. Resolution forty two. Forty, yeah, forty two twenty four Tax Lane Reduction. Resolution forty three twenty four Resolution Support, uh, Senate Number seven twenty five Concerning Unlawful Occupancy of. Dwellings, Resolution forty four twenty four Calendar Raffle for Greenwich Township Historical Society, anybody wanna make a motion? I'll make that, I'll second, uh, okay, most of them are self-explan, but the one, uh. Is Senator Steinhardt is co-sponsoring a bill for the, uh, basically a squatting laws in New Jersey. To give homeowners more rights, uh, and that's what we're doing this resolution in support of that bill. Uh, with all the problems that's going on with that, so, what's that, roll call, I guess? Yes.
Uh, Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, I, I'll resolution, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution forty five twenty four Safe and Secure Grant, that's just putting the money from the branch back into the budget, right? For the police department, so anybody want a second? Any questions, province, roll call? Looking for a motion to introduce ordinance number one oh four twenty twenty four Ordinance Amendment Chapter sixteen Zoning Section seventeen. Point two B one to add microbreweries as a permitted use, it's the same stat, uh, ordinance that we always had. We're just adding microbreweries as a permitted use, because when the law was written, there was no such thing as a micro, micro brewery.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments on it? Roll call? Yeah.
Mr. Bean?
Yeah.
Mr. Bennett?
Yeah.
Mr. McDermott, yes.
We accepting the resignation, Billy, from Mark?
Uh, we are, okay.
Looking for a motion to accept a resignation from Mark Kelson from the CFO's office.
I, I'd like to say that we're accepting that with, um, regret, because he was an excellent employee. Really, um, and. He, he said he would hope to come back in the future under different capacity should something open up, but at his time. He needed to do this, so, yes.
I'll, I'll second it and echo your sentiment about him, he wasn't really a, a, a professional employee and. A nice gentleman, real gentleman to speak with, so, I, I say we accept it with regret.
With regret.
Roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Mr. Kenny?
Yes. Lily, you wanna make a motion to authorize the advertisement for CFO white time office?
I would like to make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? We're just doing all in favor now, huh, all in favor? And what's, what's the dioxide contamination, what we have to talk about on that?
I don't think we have anything new, just those ordinances and the resolutions.
Okay, anybody have any questions on the, uh, correspondence, we already addressed the one from the school board?
No.
I'll make a motion, we'll public comment, anybody want a second, all in favor? Anybody wish to come up to the podium, make any comment?
Bill Gillian, fifteen Barnes, Wallow Court. Uh, regarding the budget and this limit. Or the gap that we, we are trying not to go over. Is there any way that we can postpone finalizing the budget? To give you all a chance, if you're gonna, if the way out is to bond it. And use by some time, so you can evaluate. The bonding side of it, because you're making a lot of decisions up here this evening just on the fly. And. I, I just think you, if you slow the whole process down, it would be beneficial.
Thanks. Anyone else? I make a motion to post up on comment? All in favor? I agree with you, Bill. That's why I said earlier when we were talking, I said to him, do we have badges done by next month?
Yeah, I, I've got a question, but I don't wanna ask it publicly.
Yeah, but it gets, I, I hate bonding for little things like that, I, I just.
Well, and. And if you have to do that and you're looking out a number of years into the future. To maximize the, or make the bonding inefficient, intelligent process. You need some time to think about it, you know, you say we're up here, well, well, why the hell, let's get three cars. Or let's find Joe a new truck.
I wish Andrew was here, I was gonna say, probably, the bonding. We could probably pass that at any given time, I don't need, no, that's connected to the budget, it's not, so. But the budget, right, the budget, we have to have a budget in by no later than June, right?
Right.
So we don't have a, a big time on that, um, but the bonding issue, we could certainly carry on unless we have to restructure. The budget to accommodate what we're not gonna get.
Tell the state, well, we're, we're over the, we're over the limit, this is how we're gonna fix it. Well, no, budget wise, we're within the limits now, that's what, that's why I said I'll after.
But if we don't bond, there are certain things that we need that we're not going to have, you know, so you're gonna have to weigh that.
They, I, that's what I said earlier, they almost force you into making bad decisions, because. And, and the worst part is, that's why I don't, I hate the bonding, cause I don't know what we're gonna do next year, we're gonna be in the same position. I, I think, in all reality, I think it'd be easier, we're raising the taxes, what, what do they say, you know, five point? I think most people would rather get the seven percent, seven cent increase, haven't paid for, be done with it. But they say we'll let us do that. I think most people would be more happy just.
If they, if they understood why that's happening, yeah.
Yeah, but the state won't let us do it.
So innocence or a hundred thousand dollar police car with interest will end up costing us a hundred and twenty.
Do, do, do they wanna, you know, you guys just all resign and then the state can figure out what the hell they wanna do?
They're coming to bond, no problem. And there go a lot more.
Well, thanks for all the work.
Well, thanks for your comments and some interest in the.
You've been through several, uh, budget processes now.
No, I kinda.
Oh, you love it, come on, come on, you do.
Come on, this meeting is smart nights on television watching, it's better than Friday night TV.
Thanks, uh, does anybody have anything else? For a motion to go into executive session, which is best the personnel matter and contracts.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor? I'm hoping thirty minutes. Okay, well, I'm making a motion, we come back in session, second, all in favor?
All right, we're in executive session for approximately forty two and a half minutes, during which time we discussed, uh, six items, three which were contractual. One regarding the municipal building, one regarding the leasing of farmland owned by the municipality, and the other regarding the leasing of private land for public purposes. Three personnel matters, one regarding the CFO position, one regarding the staff increases to, uh, employees of the municipality. And the third regarding the personnel handbook, no action was taken in executive session, but this underlined in a motion. Authorizing the amendment of the personnel policy to provide for part-time employees who work less than ten hours per week. Shall not be entitled to paid holidays, if their scheduled workday falls on a holiday, they must work that day or make up the day within the week in order to be paid. That is the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, roll call?
Uh, Mr. Kenny?
Yes.
Mr. Bean?
Yes.
Okay, anything else that we need to discuss, we done, looking for a motion to return. All in favor? I will be out of town all next week, by the way.
Oh, yeah, I heard you mention that.